Call the meeting order of the Willmar City Council, roll call.
Mayor Kelvin.
Here.
Ron Christensen.
Here.
Dennis Anderson.
Here.
Steve Amon.
Here.
Audrey Nelson.
Here.
Sean Meskey.
Here.
Andrew Plowman.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Rick Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as has been presented? Seen and hearing none, I'll entertain the motion for the consent items.
So move.
Second. Those were made in second for the consent items, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does the poll say same sign, the motion does carry. Next is a consideration opting out of the temporary family healthcare dwelling. Mr. Peterson, are these the granny pods?
They can be, Mayor Kelvin, members of the council. Before you tonight is a discussion about an ordinance that was written proposing to eliminate or to have the city of Wilmer opt out of state legislation that would direct municipalities to deal with temporary healthcare dwelling units. Most of the communities I'm familiar with are opting out or have already opted out of this legislation. It was written as a one-size-fits-all at the state level and I don't believe it's very applicable to the city of Wilmer. The council has until September 1st to make the decision to opt out or to stay with the program and staff and the committee previously recommended that the council move to opt out. We've had a minor discussion at the planning commission level and will continue that in the future to determine what type of accessory dwelling units would best fit the needs of Wilmer residents, but we do not believe that the type of dwelling units as proposed in this legislation are appropriate for Wilmer. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the ordinance, assign it a number and publish it.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody from the public wish to speak to the issue? Seen and hearing none, council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve opting out of the temporary family healthcare dwelling, discussion, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been thinking about this after you introduced it in one of the committee meetings. Does opting out of it have anything to do with the local entities that are serving seniors now? I mean, have they talked to you about it at all, or?
No, our ordinance right now would allow any number of family members to live in a separate unit on premises. So, it's not like we don't have provisions for seniors under our current zoning. What is not allowed is where you've got a single-family zoned property to have the accessory dwelling unit. They have to live in one, you couldn't have an apartment over the garage, so to speak, with separate entrance and separate utilities. You could operate that as an internal apartment in the single-family home as long as there was not a separate entrance and it functioned as a single-family dwelling. So, the planning commission's going to look at all of these and weigh all of the pros and cons of the different options and come back to the council with a recommendation if they think something needs to be changed in our ordinance.
Okay, I see that the League of Minnesota Cities was very instrumental in working with the legislature in crafting this bill. We really listen to them. That's why I'm questioning opting out of it. And does this have to do with the granny pods that the mayor mentioned?
Well, it could, it depends upon what you want to call each of them. I mean, these are specific units that they were referring to in this legislation, they have to be pre-built, basically carrying an RV or a mobile home stamp for construction. The law says that they would have connections to sewer and water and electricity. It does not specify that they have to be permanent connections. It does not specify that the homes have to be on a permanent foundation or any type of structure. It'd basically be like parking a travel trailer in your side yard or your rear yard and letting somebody live in it that qualified. And if you look at the qualifications for getting in there, you have to meet two or more of the criteria for activities of daily living or daily function. And that's not difficult to do, and I'm afraid that once we get those established in neighborhoods, you're never going to get rid of them. They'll turn into rental properties as soon as, as soon as the qualifying individual moves out.
I understand, I understand, but I'm assuming they meant these to be temporary, that's why they were considered recreational vehicles, because when mom goes, you know, you've got to pull the vehicle out of there.
Yeah. What becomes temporary? You could have somebody in one for 10, 12, 15 years.
I understand, I understand, though, thank you.
Mr. Peterson, I thought that there was a provision in there that it had to be renewed every six months, was that taken out after it went through legislation?
I don't recall seeing that, it could still be in the law, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Councilmember Meskey.
I was just going to say that when we're doing this, we're not, the city of Wilmer is not against temporary family healthcare dwellings, that's just the type of dwelling that we're, we are opposed to this particular piece.
Exactly, Councilmember Meskey, the, the objection that I have is that the state of Minnesota is telling the city of Wilmer how to deal with accessory dwelling units and there are a variety of options out there open to us, and I think we need a more thoughtful analysis of those options and not have to be constrained by the time limits placed on this decision by the legislature.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Kelvin. Just a clarification, though, on the League of Minnesota Cities. They did work with the legislature, but they didn't like what the legislature came up with. In fact, the ordinance that we're using is something that they encouraged the cities to do, to opt out of the legislation and to come up with their own program because they didn't care for some of the things that ended up in there that they had advised them against. So, I just want to clarify that, that we aren't going against the League of Minnesota Cities. In fact, they were encouraging cities to, to do this very thing, to opt out and come back with their own plan.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe that the suburbs represented by the state representative, the draft of the language, have also voted to opt out, so.
Does this do anything for the tiny home movement? It doesn't, does it? The tiny home movement is probably separate from that.
Not really, that's a completely separate issue and it's one that's not being addressed very much or very well at all in the state of Minnesota. I don't know too many communities that are making a lot of changes to their ordinances to accommodate the small, the real small homes. We would allow them in Wilmer right now, if there were no covenants to prevent them in an, in an ordinance, they would have to be on a permanent foundation and they would have to have permanent connections to sewer and water and electricity. But if somebody wants to build a 120-square-foot house and live in it, they can do that.
And then the other thing is, is that I know when, when this first came up, you and I had a conversation about it, and I know there were some concerns also under the fire code, I see our fire chief's not here tonight, but I was just wondering, did the fire chief weigh in on, on this at all? Because it was, there was concerns about the interconnected smoke detectors and all those types of things.
Not formally, we've had an informal discussion and he agrees that it's better to do something that is site-built and would be addressed by the building codes and fire codes that municipalities already have in place.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
There were photos that were presented at the League of Minnesota Cities meeting, it might be helpful if something, you know, if people are curious about this, because this was a unit, I mean, what was being displayed is a unit that's like backed in your driveway and hooked up with a hose and plugged into electricity or put in your backyard and done the same. So, it's not the same concept as tiny houses or some of those things, so I think we need to be careful of that. What we're talking about is, is something just put in your driveway or in your front yard, so.
Yeah, I think at one meeting, we actually looked them up and looked at them, they're kind of interesting. I think the first legislation that was drafted actually said you had to buy them from a specific supplier, I don't know if that was removed either, but I know the original legislation actually said the supplier you had to buy them from, so. I'd looked at it pretty extensively when it first came out, so. Okay, council, you ready to vote? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does the poll say same sign?
It's an ordinance, so it's roll.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Amon.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Meskey.
Aye.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
The ordinance passes, zero. Okay, next, thank you, Mr. Peterson, next we have the open forum and we have Mr. Bob Score.
That's fine, I'll pass.
Okay.
It was just needed.
I'm sorry?
That was only if needed, so I have nothing to say.
Okay, it just said that you wanted to be last and you were the only that signed up, so, yeah.
I put out if needed, so that's fine. It's not in case somebody's watching.
Next we'll have Public Works Public Safety report, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we did meet on Tuesday, July 12th, 2016, at City Hall. I did call the meeting to order, item number two is public comment, nobody was there to speak to us. Item number three was for information only, our bi-monthly report from the Police and Fire Department. Our chief felt noted the jail census for that day was 126, 43 were from the Department of Corrections, 73 Kanduay County, and 10 from other counties. Calls for service the previous two weeks told 853, and so far we're eight, eight days ahead of this date last year. Majority of the calls were for traffic stops, public assist, and suspicious slash people, people slash vehicles. The committee discussed suspicious people calls and citizens' gut instincts of noticing something out of place. We were encouraged and to encourage the citizens to call if you see anything out of place or are suspicious. The department will be hosting its next coffee, Coffee with a Cop, on July 22nd at Dunn Brothers Coffee. And I don't, what, what time is that, by the, by the way, chief?
7:30 AM to 9:00 AM, and people can stop in anytime.
Okay, 7:30 to 9:00 AM, July 22nd at Dunn Brothers Coffee. They'll be available to talk to you and if anybody wants, is interested in the National Night Out events on August 2nd, you can speak to the police department about that. Committee also discussed the status of the Appleton Prison with the chief felt noting opening the prison did not pass the House and Senate and further information could be obtained from our sheriff. On the Fire Department's side, calls for service for the weeks previous were 17, four for weather watch, five alarm evac activations, one medical assist, three car crashes, one fire, and two cooking fire. The total calls for service in the Fire Department this year is 167, last year at this time it was 176. He noted that the dispatch time en route for June was seven minutes and 14 seconds, which is really good for a local fire department. The Fire Department did finish a sprinkler inspection for rice rehab and they anticipating, anticipate taking patients in the coming week, which would have been last week. That was for information only. Item number four is a resolution, has to do with a joint powers agreement. Our staff brought forward to the committee for approval, a joint powers agreement between the state of Minnesota, Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, and the city of Wilmer Police Department to utilize the criminal justice data communications network. After some discussion, a motion is made, seconded and passed, to approve the joint powers agreement between the state of Minnesota, Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, and the city of Wilmer to utilize the criminal justice data communications network. And I will introduce that resolution.
Second.
Motion made in second to introduce a resolution for consideration of joint powers agreement, discussion. All those in favor, the motion signify, roll call?
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Amon.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Meskey.
Aye.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, eight, zero.
Resolution does pass, next, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, item number five also is a resolution, has to do with the lift station at the fairground amendment, at the fairgrounds, amendment number one. Again, staff brought with a committee, this amendment for lift station professional services agreement with Bolton and Mink in the amount of $7,296. Additional engineering services were needed to conclude the environmental impact worksheet submitted to the MPCA by completing a section 106 review, including historical and cultural forms as required by the Minnesota Historic Preservation Office. Funding for the additional professional services will come from the contingency fund within the project. The committee discussed the specifics of the review and its requirement in regards to the PFA funding of the project. The review has not been previously needed with PFA facility plan requirements, but the funding and plans cannot be approved until the requested review is completed. After some discussion, motion is made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve amendment number one for the fairgrounds lift station professional services agreement with Bolton and Mink in that amount of $7,296.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion, roll call?
Councilmember Amon.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Meskey.
Aye.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, eight, zero.
The resolution does pass, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, our last item, number six, is a information only, the committee discussed if any additional quiet zones will be placed at railroad crossings in the city. Staff noted that there are none planned at this time in the CIP and discussed the high expense of this type of project with no true guarantee. The fact that train traffic is predicted to change after the Y project is completed was part of the answer. When that's done, we'll maybe look at quiet zones if it doesn't get any quieter. With that, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we file these minutes as stated, if there's no questions or comments.
Second.
Motion made in second to file the minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Amon.
Thank you, thank you, Ron, for reading the minutes. I brought up the issue of the quiet zones, like I said, every once in a while, we don't set our priorities, but when I always came on the council here eight years ago, almost, actually a year prior to that, or two prior, two years prior to that, about 10 years ago or nine and a half years ago, there was a lot of discussion, discussion about the quiet zones, and that was a big priority for the downtown, was to have those quiet zones installed throughout the whole city, because we thought that would be improvement in quality of life. For some reason now, that seems to be not on the community improvement program, the funding for that, and it's like dropped by the wayside, and I, I think there's some illusion that with this new Y railroad project coming in, that it's going to decrease the train noise in our community. And I've talked to several people and my understanding is that's changed, that now the railroad is considering only putting in a single track spur versus a double, which will mean that all that's going to be, all they're going to be able to do is, is push it, a rail off to the side and still continue to use our traffic, which means there will be little or no difference in the amount of traffic noise or trains coming through this area on, on the switchback. And so I'm concerned about it, everybody keeps talking about this big project and I think it's great, the idea and the concept's great, but I, I'm getting conflicting reports from Burlington, Burlington Northern about it, and I know Bruce is back there just waiting to explain it to me with such enthusiasm, but I thought this would be a time to comment on it, and if we're not going to have any significant decrease in the traffic coming through our downtown area and trains blowing, why in the world would we even go ahead and commit to them, us spending that kind of money, with the taxpayers' money, when there's not going to be any significant improvement? And I, I just was wondering if I get an update on that or comment on what I'm hearing out in the community.
So, I just want a clarification, you've heard this from Burlington Northern?
I've heard this from employees on Burlington Northern.
I attend monthly meetings and I'm not hearing anything of what you're talking about, so. Mr. Peterson, do you have some shell-shocking information, different from what we talked last week?
I don't know if it's any different than what we talked about last week, Mr. Mayor, but just to clarify, the Y project on the west side of town is still being constructed, the road bed is being constructed for the main line and a siding. The spur track that will serve our industrial park will come off the main line. The main line, as can, as proposed and as is planned to be constructed, will still carry the trains from the Morris subdivision to the Marshall subdivision. Nothing's changed as far as routing trains. There may be a slight decrease in train traffic at the current time, but that's a temporary occurrence and I think we'll see that traffic pick back up. Burlington Northern has requested that they not be required to build the siding at the same time that they build the main line. I don't believe the public partners are very accepting of Burlington Northern's request or proposal, and that is still being negotiated between the parties. It's extremely premature to say what the final project will look like, except to say that the main line will get constructed on the Y and it will divert the traffic as proposed and as planned.
Yeah, that's everything that I've heard as well. There's a conference call on Wednesday again, if that's different, I guess if you're talking, you know, we all know how people talk.
Sure.
I would make sure you're talking to credible people that know what's going on.
I think, Mr. Peterson, Mary, if I may interrupt, explained where there is a little dilemma with negotiation. I guess that's the highlight of the conversation right now, and that, I guess, with, with the money we're spending for contributing to this project, and I encourage that, we contribute to it, I'm, I'm not assured that we're going to significantly reduce the amount of traffic coming through our downtown area, and putting that type of money into the community, taxpayers' money into that project, is, and if we're not going to see a reduction in, in the noise traffic and we can't get some kind of a guarantee, why in the world would we even go ahead of it? I, I guess I question it, I.
I'm confused, I, Mr. Peterson, I don't know if you have the numbers, I mean, it's substantial on Burlington Northern's part, but I didn't think the city was putting all that much money into it. Mr. Backman is here as well.
The only money that the city is really putting in out of pocket is the staff time to participate in this project. It's the conveyance of right-of-way to MinDOT for the highways and conveyance of right-of-way to BNSF for the railroad that's being requested from the city. There is no out-of-pocket cost.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. In response to that, when I say taxpayers' money, it's coming from the federal government, we're getting a grant, it's their tax dollars, whether it be from the, in the city budget or not, it's their budget dollars or our tax dollars or, or. I guess I'd like to be briefed on it, what's going on, if we could, maybe at the next meeting, maybe it'd be community development or Public Works, but I, I think there's something here that needs to have a, we need to have a hard line, hard line of negotiation with this, and I'm really concerned about nothing in writing guaranteeing that we're going to have the reduction in noise, and if that's the case, this is the time to negotiate with them, to see if there's other solutions that we can do to reduce the traffic noise downtown.
Would you like to make that in a form of a motion?
We have a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes.
I mean, I, I've put literally hundreds of hours into this project, and to, to hear what's being said here tonight is very confusing to me. Like I said, I will, I've got a conference call on Wednesday, I'll ask these questions on Wednesday, and I'll say that it's been brought up by a council member, but this is all pretty new stuff to me, I mean, I didn't hear it at our last conference call, didn't hear it at the last time I met with Senator Franken and Senator Klobuchar, you know, I met with them this spring. Boy, I'm confused, maybe somebody can clarify for me what I should be asking, Councilmember Peterson. I mean, you just made council. I'm really confused. Planning Development Director, Peterson.
Thank you for that correction. Sean and I met this afternoon with representatives of MinDOT, MinDOT's legal, representatives of the county, engineering staff, again, to put together a draft document to begin final negotiations with BNSF on this project. It is moving ahead exactly as planned, with the exception of BN's proposal to eliminate the siding. Short of that, I don't see where anything is changing regarding train movement, train noise, or anything that would give the city less of a product than we had anticipated when the Tiger grant was applied for. You know, it has been suggested publicly that BNSF has pulled out of the project, I mean, that's, that's ludicrous, I don't know where people get those ideas, just foolishness.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, maybe what we need is a monthly or by month, or every other month update on this, just to see where we're going, because this is a major project that will be good for not just Wilmer, but the, the county, the region, probably. So, if we could maybe just get an update on it, every other month or monthly, keep us abreast of what's going on.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was, I was just going to suggest about the same thing, that maybe you can either report on, you, you could report on your, these meetings or, or, you know. And that could be attached to the city administrator's weekly memo and just keep the council updated on, which would, I think, enable any council member that gets any questions or hears remarks from the, from the citizens to re-deal with them, so that reduce the amount of false information out there and supply accurate information of where we're at, just a suggestion.
Sure. Mr. Peterson, how often are you guys meeting? Are you guys meeting every two weeks, or are you guys meeting once a month?
We have a joint phone call involving BNSF, MinDOT, the consultant, the city, the EDC in the county, every Wednesday morning, every Wednesday morning.
Okay, so you're meeting weekly. We meet, we meet monthly.
Yeah.
And we should certainly be able to put something together, yeah, so.
I guess what, what I've tried to do through the committee structure and keeping them up to date with status reports is when there are major developments in the process. If it's just all behind-the-scenes work and putting together the structure for an agreement, I, I don't consider that to be necessarily noteworthy. If the council wants more information on a more timely basis, we can certainly provide it.
Certainly, and I think what I'll do is I'll send the minutes of the, of the meeting that, that I attend, I'll just get that to city administrator Cruz and he can send that out on a, on a monthly basis, so. Councilmember Nelson.
I was just going to comment, I think Mr. Peterson has provided updates at the community development meeting on a regular basis, and I think that's a, a regular ask with what's going on there, so I would assume that, you know, that, that has been happening and it has been in the minutes, too, so, but maybe not the level of specific information that's being asked about tonight.
Sure, yeah, like I said, we have our meeting on Wednesday, I'll, I'll ask these questions and I'll say, I mean, I'll tell Burlington Northern straight up, this is what's being said in our community, and I got it from a council member, so it came from a reliable source, so, and we'll, I'm sure that will not make Amy real happy, but go ahead.
As luck would have it, at the August 1st council meeting, there will be representatives of MinDOT here to provide a very detailed update on the Y project. The next day, they will make the same presentation to the county board, and on August 2nd, there will also be a community meeting for the project as well, and those announcements will be coming in the media very shortly.
Sure, and I know the last community meeting that was held on this project, I think councilmember Nelson and Anderson were there, I don't know if anybody else was there or not, but, that, so, those are, those community meetings are open to the public, they're published in the paper, they're noticed, I believe that the city administrator had it in our weekly notes, and so certainly it would be good if council has questions to attend those meetings, so that they can speak factual when they are asked these questions, so. We have a motion on the table to file the minutes, any additional discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
This shows the issue that we dealt with earlier in our previous meeting here at 6 o'clock, about the communication issue, you know, and, and again- You know, and again, this is just an example of what has happened and how myths and non-truths get distributed throughout the community and actually can derail... Good choice of terms in this case. Derail the railroad project or get...
No pun intended, right?
No, no pun intended. So I just wanted... This issue of briefing, and I appreciate your comments. And thank you, Bruce, for that report. This is not done by any means by me to derail that project. I just wanted to know what the concerns are after people have talked to me about it. So thank you for verifying that.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. Councilmember Amen for Labor Relations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met July 13th. We had no public comments. Item number three was the stormwater compliance permit assistant position. City Administrator Cruz presented the revised job description proposed by staff for a stormwater compliance permit assistant position. Position was referred back to the committee requesting additional information pertaining to cost, benefit of the position, the rationale, training cost, and more detailed job description. Staff provided this information and included the compensation scoring of the position placing its range as a five of the Ask Me General Unit. And staff stated the MPCA has stepped up its enforcement because MS4 communities are now being held to higher standards, primarily in stormwater and right-of-way permitting. Staff presented information related to the value of the position to include the financial implications and the potential to keep the city in compliance with the MS4 legislation. Committee discussed the pros and cons of creating a position at length. There is a motion made to approve the stormwater application permit job description and authorize staff to fill the position. There is a second to the motion. And there is offered a friendly amendment to the motion by Mr. Muske to include the position being reevaluated in 12 months. That was agreed to and the stormwater compliant permit position will become before the council with no recommendation as a motion did not pass and it was a two-to-two vote. Item number four...
Are you going to bring it to the table or are you going to...
There's nothing to bring to the table. The motion was a two-two, so there's no motion for action.
Okay.
Item number four, City Administrator Cruz requested the committee consider the addition of the risk management duties to the city clerk job description to include file, monitor, and maintain property, liability, and automotive insurance and oversee and administer all non-personnel insurance-related issues for the city, including maintenance of all certificates of insurance. Mr. Muske made a motion. It was seconded to approve the job description. And I will move the recommendation to the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion made and seconded to make the additions of risk management duties to the city clerk job description. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doesn't the city clerk do this now?
Mr. Cruz.
Yes, yes. So it wasn't in the job description?
It wasn't in there.
Yeah, so it's just being added.
Okay, but he is doing it now, okay.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. The motion does carry. Councilmember Amen.
Mr. Cruz informed the committee the finance director job description was changed to reflect updated titles. The job descriptions of human resource director, city clerk, and finance director will be scored by the employee committee in the near future, after which time advertising can be initiated for the city clerk and the human resources director's positions. All three scores will be brought to the committee for information. It is noted that Mr. Anderson will be assigned to the interview committee for a human resource director. And by the way, that's in a rotating basis for those who might not remember. Since that was his forte and his private life before this, we thought that would be a good fit to have him be part of that. And he requested to be on that particular committee to review that position. So anybody in the future, if they should want to be on, just please contact Larry. I will move the recommendation of that, Mr. Mayor.
There's not a motion, is there?
Oh, there is no motion there, I'm sorry. Being no further business, meeting adjourned and I'll move to file the minutes.
Motion made to file the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Motion being seconded, file the minutes. Discussion. Councilmember Muske.
I want to go back to item number three. Maybe this is just my newness to the committee, but the last sentence there, in my understanding of how it was going to operate, is that that position would come before the council with no recommendation because we were split in a vote. At least that's what the minutes reflect.
That's what's happened in the past. That's why I asked the question. Councilmember Anderson.
That was my question. I think it comes to the table with no recommendation. I don't think it dies at the Labor Committee.
Otherwise, half the council doesn't have a chance to voice their opinion.
Mr. Mayor would be up to the council if they wanted to move this motion for anybody to introduce it.
Mr. Scott, can you help us with this one?
Certainly, any member of the council can make a motion. At the moment, you have a motion on the table to file the minutes. For the motion to be made to approve that position at this time, you'd have to have the motion to file the minutes be withdrawn or else you could vote on the motion to file the minutes and at some point, maybe at the end of the meeting, any council member could make the motion if they so choose.
Councilmember Muske.
Is that not complicated because the minutes reflect that it would come before the council?
Mr. Scott?
Well, I mean, that's what the minutes state. I honestly, I don't know what the committee's practice has been on a tie vote. I would defer to your practice. I guess if there is a practice that the city follows to bring tie votes forward to the council without a recommendation, I would recommend that the motion to file the minutes be withdrawn now, allowing someone on the council to make the motion to approve the position before the minutes are filed.
Councilmember... I'm sorry. Were you commenting? You, yes? Councilmember Anderson?
My memory, for what it's worth. Generally, when something comes on a tie vote, I think that just means that that committee was tied and it would come to the full table with no recommendation. I think the council still has the opportunity to vote on it.
That's my recollection of what's happened in the past too. We don't have our city clerk here to answer that question, so maybe I'll rely on either Mr. Peterson or Mr. Okens. Do you remember what we've done in the past in these situations?
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council. Councilmember Anderson summed it up accurately. It's come to the council without a recommendation for full discussion in front of the council.
That's what I remembered as well. Seems we do things different now. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, I guess my recommendation would be either that the motion be withdrawn or if not, if anyone on the council wishes to see this motion made, that you vote down the motion to file the minutes at this time. And then the table would be open for new motions.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in... We have a motion to file the minutes which would take that item off the table. The motioner and seconder did not withdraw their motion to file the minutes. So that means that we have to move forward with the motion.
Mayor Kelvin?
Councilmember Nelson?
I have a question on the minutes. It's in the last paragraph. I attended the meeting, I wasn't at the table. But it was my understanding that the minutes reflect that the scores will be brought back to the committee for information only. I think the request was for it to come back to make sure that the scoring wasn't raising a grade level on any of those positions and that it would give the committee a chance to review whether those positions were good as they were or if some duties needed to be reviewed to make sure that we weren't... We knew what grade levels we were advertising for. That's how I listened to that conversation. That's different than what's in the minutes.
And we do have a motion to file the minutes, so... All those in favor of the motion to file the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I had two voting no. So the motion does pass, file the minutes. Next is consideration of on-sale intoxicating and on-sale Sunday liquor licenses for El Tapatio. Mr. Cruz.
Before you is a transfer, a new owner going into El Tapatio and it's a liquor license. As I understand it, the police have completed their background check and we recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the on-sale intoxicating, on-sale Sunday liquor licenses for El Tapatio because of a change in ownership. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Muske.
Aye.
Councilmember Flawman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Gate zero.
The motion does pass. Next, we have consideration of preliminary final plat Lake North 5th Edition.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council. Lake North 5th Edition is a two-lot replat of property that was part of the original Lake North Edition PUD. It's taken four lots and combined them into two lots. And it's for the purpose of residential development, single-family residential development. The planning commission has reviewed and approved the plat with the condition that utilities be added as requested by Womer Municipal Utilities. And it's recommendation of staff that the council approve the plat with that same condition.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, what happens to the sewer and water infrastructure that's brought into the extra lots? They abandon them or they have to be taken out?
Mr. Peterson?
Councilmember Christensen, Mayor Kelvin, members of the council. Yeah, any of the extra services, I believe the utilities will require to be capped.
But they'll remain in place, just like they don't have to dig through the street and cap them.
Right, they're not going to go back to the main and do it, no.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there some discussion? This is a simple motion, correct? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. Next is consideration of local option sales tax projects of regional significance in Womer Downtown Development, Inc. We have a memo in front of us and I don't know if Councilmember Anderson, if you want to address the Womer Downtown Development request that they had at the last Finance Committee meeting that we didn't get to? Or if we want to go straight to City Administrator Cruz?
Well, I'll just make a comment. The Womer Downtown Development did send us some information on what they wanted to be considered in the local option sales tax. And we can all read that. It has to do with Block 50. The issue that I have with this is it has no dollars associated with it. So we don't know, you know, how that might fit into our projected project. And I can't answer any of the questions. I'm just saying what came forth at the Finance Committee meeting. Maybe some of staff has some further insight, but I do not.
Okay, I know that at the Finance Committee meeting, Bev Doherty was here, but like we said, the meeting got a little long and I think, I believe she left, so... And I don't see her here tonight. Is anybody here from Downtown Development Corp. that was just speak to the issue? She didn't hear any none? Councilmember Fagerly, did you want to speak?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Since I'm the liaison to them, and when it was my turn to talk, they asked me about what's happening in the city and I mentioned the sales tax. And I said some of the options that were available. The Board of Directors didn't talk about this. It was Bev that said we should do this. Parking ramp between the hospital and the library and commercial space and housing. It wasn't voted on by the Board of Directors or even talked about it, so... That's where this is coming.
So you would say as the liaison, we take that off the table and continue with our discussion?
Right.
Mayor Kelvin?
Councilmember Nelson?
Just a comment, I think that was an original proposal that both the mayor and the administrator brought forward. So it had been presented once before, so with that information. But I don't think it was generated by the Downtown Development Corporation.
Councilmember Anderson?
I had suggested, when we were talking about local option projects, I had suggested that we maybe put in money for the Becker Avenue project. So I think, I don't know if this got taken from that suggestion or whatever, but the Becker Market or Becker Street proposal never seemed to gain traction with the city council.
Yeah, and as Councilmember Nelson said, that was one of the things that I talked about when we first had our first conversation. But it hadn't come any further than that. This was coming from another area, so... Well, I'd like to go to City Administrator Cruz.
Mr. Mayor and council, we did have the Becker Avenue project and the Block 50 project in the original list that staff presented. And this letter or proposal came in late here in the process. I think more of a reminder that there is a significant need for an investment in the downtown. And if the council was struggling and looking for something to use local sales tax dollars on, that, you know, that would be a priority for them. But once again, it's something that I included. I received it and I wanted to make sure you had the information that I had. So I think through the process here, it hasn't been one of the highest, higher priority items and you can consider it as you pick your projects.
Okay, go ahead and talk about the agenda item we have this evening.
Mr. Council, and Mr. Mayor and council, the four projects I think that we kind of centered around were civic center improvements. And we talked about $3 million being dedicated towards that. Robins Island, $3 million. Swanson Field improvements, $2 million. And then something that's a little more vague was the community center. Although it was the number one item, I think Councilmember Fagerly had mentioned a number of $10 to $12 million. And so staff was directed to come back and try and refine that. When staff presented last time, we looked at the capital improvement plan and we have about $7.5 million of items that were in the 2018 through 2021 CIP. And then that, I would suggest that that additional $10 million is probably in the out years, in year five through 10, if not to be added to the CIP in the incoming years. So the $19.062 million, staff would anticipate the council needing to address that some way as far as funding it. Once again, there's a significant funding gap and really the local sales tax dollars is one of the means to do that. And so staff asked Richard Engen to meet with us and help us try and refine the numbers. And so I've asked him to come tonight and maybe give a little overview of... To frame how the council might go forward, being he does this every day as part of his business with other government jurisdictions.
Mr. Engen, welcome. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council.
Every building project, before you break ground, has a series of things you have to go through. It doesn't make too much difference if it's a private project or a public project or a community project. One difference is some traditional private businesses, you'd have a simpler decision-making process. But even private businesses, it's... The decisions are very broad today. And a lot of things have to happen. Some of the questions that need to be answered, and they're all legitimate, is why the project? What are you going to do? The details, each one of those, these go into a long ways. Where the project is, when, how are you going to do it? All of these projects, the how is often the most challenging one. It's all easy to come up with why you're going to do something and what it is. How is... A big piece of that is the financing. And for public projects, financing is a big thing. Where you are sitting, you do have a municipal... Where you are sitting, you do have a municipal facility study that has been done, identifying a number of, a number of areas. And the staff has come up with a system of using local option sales tax for a financing project. It's not, and normally, especially with the city, but any, any project, there's a series of times you need to approve. Each one of these answers, it's rare that you can just sit down, one, two, three, and it's all taken care of. You, you go and you grab them, you answer it, it's twisted around. There'll be many stakeholders. Every city project, and it's really any building project today, there's a lot of stakeholders. Each one will be listened to and input and drive it. So it's impossible to have every one of these answered before you start moving on a project. What I see on most projects, it might come, there's five little increment steps, multiple steps that are approval. It doesn't authorize construction, but it produces, authorizes the staff to proceed a little further. And, and so I don't think it's necessary that you have the details of every building project laid out before you approve a concept. If you can approve the concept of your master facility plan, or in general the terms of it, or portions of it, you will need some capital funding. And this is one way to bring up the funding. And it does take time. It's very difficult, you know, to get the answers for all these questions and working with stakeholders, the question always comes up, how do we finance it? And doing, approving a master facility plan with, on the principle of funding it with, or partially, at least with part of it, with a local option sales tax does not preclude using grants for other, for some pieces. Some things have been talked about, there may be grants. You could have community fundraising for some things. You could have, you know, a local bond referendum for property tax if you wanted that. But I think the, personally, just speaking as a citizen of the community, I think sales tax is a good asset for the communities. And I think it'd be nice if this would be done at a state level for every city. And I understand the limits for community, or for regional significance, you know. So many of the things of the community is just for the property tax is probably the best way to finance it. But a lot of things where people, especially in a regional center, from all other outlying areas are using the facilities, I think this is a very reasonable way to finance these facilities. And I don't think, it's not unusual that the first approvals of the concept come without all the details. I think the city does have some prices and ranges for different things and making out the decisions. I think the classic example is what is a community center? You know, it's not a simple discussion because we know what our community center is, but there's also a lot of community centers that would combine everything that's in the YMCA and all kinds of different things. But I think the concept, approving it in general, and then those are things that poss, what is included in it is, will take some time to work out. And it's a process that ultimately the council, I would see would be making approve, several steps where it'll come to the council. It would have, these would have to be, each one would be approved and maybe a multiple series of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. If you'd stick around in case we have additional questions, please. Mr. Cruz, how do you want to guide us through this endeavor? I know that at the last finance committee meeting, you know, we did identify the issues. And then one of the things, the top priority, the first time we met, was the community center. And then, you know, we did talk about that, but when Councilmember Fagerly had mentioned it, he had the three projects, but then, you know, I agree that having the discussion come back on the community center as well was, was a great option. So do you want to take it from there? Or Councilmember Anderson, do you have some comments you want to make? Or how do we want to do this, council?
Well.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we were hoping to do tonight is move closer toward approving the ballot question. And, you know, there were, there were some questions that came up on, on some of these things. So my suggestion would be, you know, if there are still questions on the projects or the ballot question, we need to, we need to identify those tonight because the clock is ticking. And, and we need to approve the ballot question no later than I think our next, our next council.
Next council meeting.
So, so we need, we need to move forward. And these were the items that, that kind of rose to the, rose to the top that we want to do. So I, I think we need to decide if we want to go this way. It's, it's encouraging to hear from Mr. Engen that maybe we don't have to have all of the final details as to even where a community center might be. But we, we know we want to work toward that community center project. I would again say though, that in order for the public to intelligently vote on this, we need to put some meat on those bones, you know, by September or October. So the public knows what, what they're, what they're talking or what they're voting on.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question, clarification on the ballot. This ballot doesn't have dollar figures in or a timeframe. And is, is that something that was, has been in previous ballots or is this good the way it is? That's one question, but then if I go back and look at the projects, I don't have a clue what, from the figures last time to the figures this time, what, what's made up in these. And I get the concept and I, I'm just curious with how that plays out with the CIP. But if I add these up correctly, I think, and it states in here, it's $18 million. But we've talked about being able to raise about 2.3 a year. It also references 10 years. If I do the calculation, it looks more like we could get to 18 million in less than eight years. So I'm confused with, first the ballot, can we do it that way without being specific with dollars or a timeframe? And then second, I think I'd like some more clarification as to why 10 and 18 and how the, how those figures came up.
I think one of the things, I mean, the question has to have the dollar amount in it and it has to have the length. I think that, that's been told to us by our city attorney. So those two things have to be in the question, correct?
Mr. Mayor, there's, to answer the question on the ballot, I looked at a lot of ballot, previous city ballot questions in formulating this draft ballot. It's a draft, so if the council would like to provide more information, certainly that's a policy choice the council can make. For terms of the ballot language, it does not need to specify the amount to be raised or the term of it. Certainly the trend in more recent elections is to be more general and simply give the voters a choice to have this tax for these improvements, yes or no? Again, though, there's, the council thinks it's important to put more specifics into that language. It certainly can do that and we can craft it to include that information. This is a draft, I mean, it was intended for discussion tonight. But the trend has definitely been to be more general and concise in the language of the questions.
Okay.
Mayor Kelvin.
Another question.
Isn't there a state guideline though? You can't just, the, the, the level of city that we are, we can't just pass it and leave it on, can we?
To be honest, I think the terms of the actual tax will be dictated by the ultimate special legislation that would need to be passed in the legislature. This ballot question and this resolution would be sufficient to get this before the legislature to make that request. The details of the tax and its implementation would be determined by that legislation though.
Councilmember Mesky.
Well, in the, in the resolution that we're asked to look at this evening under item two, it actually says something that, that, it kind of goes along that and it is a little, depends on what side of the fence you are, a little disconcerting as it does say that this tax will last for an estimated of 10 years. However, it can be retired early or collected longer depending on the improvements in the debt service that are, until they're satisfied. So when you don't have it defined, I mean, if all of a sudden you decided to do an expansion on to the community center, for instance, that would mean that you could collect that beyond even a 10-year period. And so I, I think the language there leaves it a little bit loose. I like the fact that we finally have projects and numbers on them. I think we do need to refine those and then define it to where, when that project as we've presented is complete, we would probably let the sun set instead of trying to spread it out as long as we're able to.
Yeah, and I think what we heard after the last ballot question was, is that the community wants to know the number and they want to know how long. So I think if we said, you know, 10 years and we could sunset it early, I think that'd be fine. But I think that number has to be a hard number.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, in every conversation I've had, and when I, I've talked, I've talked to a lot of people about this, as I'm sure all of you have, that is one thing, is they want that to be a hard number and not to go a penny over. So. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There, there was some discrepancy and confusion the last time. And I've heard loud and clear too, that tell us how much you're going to collect. Now, we didn't do anything wrong last time, but we didn't have, we, we peed as we went, so we didn't have any financing costs. So we, we used those, the financing cost dollars to go into the projects. That wasn't wrong, but I think we need to be very explicit this time so that the public knows and understands that when it's, whatever the number is, when we get that amount, we're done.
Right. I agree with that. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We actually, I mean, we have two things. We have to pass a resolution first. And then, of course, question goes to the general ballot. And I think this is covered under Minnesota Statute 297A.99. And looking at subdivision two, Mr. Scott, it reads that before the governing body of a political subdivision requests legislative approval of a special law for a local sales tax that is administered under this section, it shall adopt the resolution indicating its approval of the tax. The resolution must include, at a minimum, information on the proposed tax rate, how the revenues will be used, the total revenue that will be raised before the tax expires, and the estimated length of time that the tax will be in effect. This subdivision applies to local laws enacted after June 30, 1998. I think that's the statute we're under.
Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, you're correct. That is the statute we're under. I think the resolution as drafted does those things. It identifies how the funds will be spent. It identifies the proposed rate. It identifies the estimated length of time the tax will be in effect. I mean, it satisfies those requirements. And as I mentioned, ultimately, the specific terms of the tax will be determined by the special legislation that would also be needed.
Yeah, the entire resolution covers those points, I agree. I just was a little concerned about the sales tax referendum question that's in there as a sample. That's a little bit.
I mean, I agree with you. The resolution is much more specific. You know, as I mentioned, I think there's a trend to make the ballot question more concise and general in nature. But certainly if the council thinks that the voters need more information in that question, such as the, you know, the information we just talked about that needs to be in the resolution, we can draft a longer, more detailed ballot question. You know, this is a, to start the conversation, this is a draft.
And that's the point I'm kind of, I was addressing Councilmember Nelson's questions, kind of, and I thought that might be helpful. But, but I've been looking at, and I agree with looking at the question, and I think that's what her concerns were about, was the actual question, the sample question that's in the resolution, that it might not really fulfill the message that we want to send to the voters.
So are you in agreement with our city attorney that the question is answered?
The resolution does.
Correct.
But I'm, I'm just a little concerned about the ballot question, whether the sufficiency of it and, and what I would want to, the message that I think, you know, that I would support going to, going to the voters. I mean, I think the dollar amounts ought to be in the question. I believe they were the last time.
Councilmember Nelson.
Back to the dollar amounts. The concern I have, and I spoke last time too, that if we're going to do a local option sales tax, it should be making enhancements, not just doing CIP. Now, I get that that frees up the CIP to do other things such as streets and perhaps some of the other building projects. But the question I have, and I'll use Swanson Field for example, of to do the improvements there correctly or the, to, to have a better situation than just replacing lights, let's say it's going to take 2.5 million. So we're saying we would collect 2 million from the local option sales tax and we would still commit 500,000 out of the CIP in order to do it? Or are we saying we will only do $2 million worth of provenance to Swanson Field?
The way I read the question in looking back at the last local option sales tax and the way it was administered, is there's flexibility within the question. You're identifying these four projects with an anticipated cost of that amount. If you wanted to put in local dollars to augment those, I don't believe there's a problem with that. Mr. O'Kens, you want to address that? Our finance director, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you are correct on that. That would be interpreted that that would be the estimated amount of local option sales tax revenues only, not the total amount of whatever improvements you choose to do.
And then could you comment, I mean, because last time we had five projects listed, four of them we did. And the parameters that we used for those, I mean, those numbers moved around, right? I mean, it wasn't a hard, rock-hard number? Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. The amounts that were finally used again, or the estimates that were put there, were estimates that would have been bonded for. And since the release of the airport land delayed the projects and they were not shovel-ready, that's, goes to Councilman Anderson's comments about using financing costs to be able to pay for hard costs and that's why the dollar amounts fluctuated from what the referendum was.
Can I answer your question, Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, can I ask one more?
Oh, certainly, you can ask all night. Well, we've got to be done by 11, I think.
Yeah. Okay. So let's say we do our due diligence and we do this right and we come up with the right things to do at the civic center and Robins Island and Swanson Field and Community Center. And that total now comes to $20 million instead of 18. I just want clarification of the language that's in there right now. Does it allow us to collect the 20 million or does it allow us to only collect 18 and terminate?
I would not be in favor of anything that allowed us to collect a penny over 18, personally, but I'm not voting as the full council. I believe the way it's written currently, the way I read it, you would be able to continue to collect up to the 10 years. But, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. Mayor and council, the reason the, the question is worded so, allowing so much flexibility is we don't know what the, what the project exactly is, like the community center. We don't know when we're going to build it. We could build it in year one or we could build it in year nine. If we built it in year one, we would have to bond and we would have the interest on top of that. And so the question before you allows you to build a $10 million community center in year one and bond for it and, and pay 10 million plus interest. So in that case, if all these, if you spent the other 8 million on the other projects, then yes, your, your bonding cost, your interest cost would be over the $18 million. So it does give you the flexibility. Once again, we don't know exactly what the community center is. We don't know what, if we're going to bond for it or not. Those are future decisions that the council will make and, and the timing. The council could collect the tax for eight years and have cash in the bank and then do a $10 million project at the end of it. So there's a lot of unknowns and those unknowns are worded in this question to give the council the flexibility that you will make future decisions that, to commit those funds and then at some point, if you want to decertify that tax early, the council has the ability to do that. And to respond to Councilmember Nelson's question, we had a little over $19 million in, in our earlier presentation. That's been trimmed back to the 18. Thinking that there's a lot, like my deducts grant, there's 400, up to $400,000 available for replacement of other refrigerations. So that would be one source of funding. With Robins Island, we have maybe legacy, legacy funding or regional parks funding that might supplement some of those items. We have amounts of estimates in the CIP for Robins Island and the civic center, but once again, they're just estimates. And then there's portions of that that the city can do to one extent or another. So depending on how much money is available, you know, we'll, we'll be able to adjust that. that. The comment that, you know, just because those items are in the CIP right now, there's, there's about $4 million that are in the CIP, and we only have a couple million dollars of what we have historically funded. So, that's where the question was, are we keeping up with deferred maintenance or not? And our facility study says that we're definitely not keeping up with our, our maintenance, and so, we're playing a little bit of catch-up there. So, there's, there's just a lot of variables in all of this, and the flexibility is meant to have the voters approve it, and then put that back on the council to, to carry out that in, in whatever manner they, they choose at that time. And I agree with the mayor that, that, you know, I've heard too, that what was spent, I think eight million was authorized, and a little over $12 million was, ended up being spent on the last one, and that difference was that financing cost that we could have achieved. But once again, the council has the ability to prove that to whatever extent they want.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for recalling, for recalling the last sales tax. We've had two of them prior to this request, and in both instances, we collected more than what we said we were going to spend. The second one, second one considerably, and it's a good thing we did, because we'd have never done the section between the Civic Center and the Blue Line Club. We can't, I think it came in at 800,000, we ended up spending two, $3 million on it. It was considerably more. And if I'm not mistaken, we let that sales tax go to the period, the 10 years. And I'm not an advocate for a sales tax, a half percent sales tax former, as you probably all realize, and there's several reasons. I spoke to some business people over the last couple of weeks, and the tax is collected where the product, the product is delivered. If you buy a refrigerator from Collins, you tell them you're going to pick it up right outside the city limits, they don't have to charge a sales tax. If I buy lumber from Lumber Yard, $50,000 worth, I can say, you know, I'll pick it up, you know, out here in the, whatever, North 160th Street, or something like that. So, it's collected where the product is delivered. Now, that's a dilemma for these business people. It's almost like keeping two, two books, where they collect it, where they don't collect it. So, there is a little bit of frustration on their part in, in having this. Now, said that, I also realize that the, the future of our city and many others is going to be in limbo, because it's going to cost more money to keep up with our infrastructure and our maintenance needs. And if we are to do a sales tax, I'm all for it if it is for the maintenance of our facilities, because we are behind, as we've discussed many, many meetings ago. I, I look at the, the survey that was done on the internet, you know, they had 774, or 840 respondents, and the number one item on there was streets, regional street slash highway improvements, and we know we're behind there. I don't know why it isn't on this list, because I think the state would allow us to do that. Robins Island was second, Community Center was third, and Civic Center improvements were fourth. Way down the list of the 13, number nine was a Swanson Field improvement. I don't know why that's so high on our list in the question. If Civic Center improvements, it says a $10 million. Now, you mentioned building one. I don't think we need to build one, personally. I think we should fix the one we have there. It's, it's fully capable of doing what it's supposed to do for the community, and unless we define the Community Center, I am, I wouldn't be for the sales tax, because if you go down in a metro area, and even outside the metro area, and, and look at the Community Centers that have been built in the last seven to nine years, I would say, every one of them are in the red, big numbers in the red every year, and almost every one of them compete with local physical fitness centers, the YMCA, and we're not in business to do that. It was mentioned earlier that we could build a facility, they could hold wedding receptions out there and that. Well, that isn't our job. That's the Holiday Inn, and the KEC, and the Legion, and the VSW. They are tax-paying citizens. They're the ones that need to perform and get payments so they could pay their property taxes and their, and their employees, so they could spend their money locally. So, I am not for building a new building under our sales tax. I, I think it should be utilized completely for maintenance, upgrading the facilities we have, because we have not kept pace with the needs, evidenced by the auditorium, the Civic Center, the Public Works Garage we're fixing now, and the Civic Center, Community Center. They all need many dollars of upgrades. Now, if we build a new Community Center, I want to make sure that the dollars set aside for future maintenance, because we have not done that in the past. That's where I stand. And I've heard that from a lot of my constituents. Seniors.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Christensen, I think you missed one or maybe two of our meetings where we talked about this as a, as a, as a council, and the council agreed that roads should have more money spent on them. That was the, we, we heard that loud and clear. The discussion centered on that we would ask the mayor to put more dollars in his budget for '17, because there would be some money freed up. So, I think we are addressing that. We did hear that. I also want, I, I would like to ask our finance director to talk about this, setting money aside for, for future maintenance. I think we had that discussion as well, at one of, at, maybe that was at a public meeting, I don't know, but the finance director had a very good response on that, and if it's all right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like him to respond on, on setting money aside for future maintenance.
Finance Director Okens.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Anderson, I believe you're maybe talking about funding depreciation and funding the amount of devalue of assets that the city owns. The city has about $3 million outside of the enterprise, which was the waste treatment plant, in annual depreciation, and in order to maintain buildings, that should be the minimum amount that would be able to be set aside or put into buildings or prioritized to maintain. As Administrator Cruz mentioned, in the past few years, the amount has been somewhat set at about two, $2 million. So, at that, you are, you know, about one-third falling behind each year. So, I don't know if that's what you were looking for or not.
Thank you.
Mr. Okens, but the city cannot, the city cannot have non-swept accounts unless the council establishes the non-swept account. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, could you define your terminology of non-swept account?
An account, an account that goes forward, assigned to replacing chairs. So, every year, we put money in, in an account to, to replace chairs.
The city certainly could. It would open itself up to criticism by the state auditor on balances, in the fund balances. They would be designated or restricted, I'm assuming from what you're explaining to me, but that, that could be done, but state auditors have guidelines on what they like to see for fund balances, and they look at that.
Right. Okay. Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah. Getting back to our streets, I mean, we did talk about this before, and I was one of the people that commented on this, that that was a big response item, and that the way the question was worded, and I believe that the citizens believe that we're talking about the streets in town here, like the ones that go by most of our homes, and they would, and my concern is, our conversations at some of our recent meetings, I mean, obviously, we don't have the money for our five-year CIP plan. It's not there.
Right.
Which means if we, even if we do $18 million worth of projects, we still only have about, at current revenue sources, of about a million dollars a year that we've got to spend on, you know, like any squad car replacements, stuff like that, and we rate those needs and score them. Staff does, and of course, the higher the score, then you're going to get some dollars. The low scores, they don't get any dollars, even though they've been in our five-year CIP plan, so. And I know in our last finance meeting, I recall Mr. Okens' comments, our primary source of revenue is our real estate taxes, and our real estate tax base is not growing. In fact, in the last few years, the values have gone down, so our revenues have gone down. And I mean, while I am a great believer in having these amenities, and of course, anything we approve, the people get to vote on it, but, but they need to know all of what's going on, I think, and, and for us to say that we're going to put some money, if we do these things, we're going to put some money into streets, I guess, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're going to be talking nominal amounts, like, you know, $300,000. That doesn't do a lot for streets. It takes, you know, to do a city block, it's pretty expensive. I mean, it's not cheap. So, those are my concerns, you know, that we not misrepresent what we can, what we're capable of doing.
And I'll, I'll, I'll say back on the streets piece. Mayor Yanis dedicated 150,000 into city streets the last year he was mayor. The first year I was mayor, I dedicated 250,000 to state, to streets, which the council supported. So, that's 400,000. And then, the recommendation at our last meeting was to put, or the last time we talked about this, was another 200 for next year. So, that would give us 600,000 over and above the dollars that we've had previously. So, we had 150, then we had 400, and then we'll be at 600, and I'm concerned that we don't get too far in front of that curve as well. So, we'll have 600,000 now. I know I talked to our Public Works Director, and he would have no trouble spending that kind of money, and probably a lot more, but we have to be responsible at the same time. So, so, I agree with you, 600,000 doesn't get us very much, but it's a lot more than we were doing three years ago. Okay, what we have in front of us is we've got some suggestions. I'm not comfortable with the 18 million or more. I mean, I think we need to define that number, but it's up to you, the council, to define that number. It's not up to the mayor, but as the mayor, I'm not comfortable with having that open number like that. Councilmember Nelson.
When we started this conversation, I struggled with the concept of doing this for 10 years, simply from the standpoint that we're so far behind, and we really don't have a true vision for our community. So, the items in here, however, I think will enhance our community and perhaps help us to increase our, our tax base by making improvements to our community with that. But I'm still confused with the 18 million, you know, can we reduce it to eight years? Or should we be looking at, I, I don't understand why we went from saying 2.3, and at one point in time, I heard 2.5 million a year to kind of where we're at. So, I guess I have a little disconnect with the 10 years. I understand the funding of it, but I think that there's a lot of things that need to happen in the community, and we should be ready to be progressive again, and so, I'm concerned about saying, let's take 10 years to do improvements that have been on the books for a long time.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may be able to answer that. The reason for 10 years, in my mind, is you may have some bad years, a downtime, downward economy, and, and your best shot is to go the 10, collect the 18, cut it off then. It's like buying a home. You get a 30-year mortgage, I want to pay it off in 22 years. May not, but I'm going to try. So, I think, I think it's better to do the 10 years, and when you collect the 18 million, if that's the breaking point, then we tell taxpayers, we're going to sunset it and, and hold true to our word, as the mayor said.
Councilmember Anderson, followed by Nelson. Or is yours, yours follow-up to his question?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson, followed by Nelson.
I've got, I've got several, if it's okay. The question was asked of me, that on, when we collect the local option, or the sales tax on vehicles, it's limited to a dollar amount of like $25 or $30. And I, and I, the more I think about it, why is that fair? If you do a significant improvement in your home, you know, you're going to pay sales tax on the total dollars. My question is, is that state law, that, that vehicles are limited to the $25 or $30?
Mr. Scott?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, I am relatively sure that is a case in state law, that the excise tax is, is a cap to it per vehicle sale.
Okay. That seems unfair to me. The, the next question I have is, when we talk about the Civic Center, $3 million, now, that doesn't put in the third sheet of ice. That primarily is going to be some improvements to maybe locker rooms and some things like that, and primarily, it's the ice making. Where does that leave the curlers? And I guess my thought on the curlers is, we should help them build the facility on their own, on our, on our property, you know, and that might, and I don't know how it, how it works, and it would be, probably be separate from this local option sales tax discussion, but it would be land, infrastructure, and something else to help them. But am I right that the Civic Center improvements does nothing about curling?
I don't see how it can. Mr. Brizendine, do you know an answer to that? Or, or Mr. Cruz, is there anything in there for curling?
Mr. Mayor and council, in the CIP from 2017 to 2020, there's $3,620,000. And so, getting back to Councilmember Nelson's question, how do the numbers all work? There's a lot, there's a certain amount that's unknown, that could be mighty ducks grant, could be some local levy that would supplement it. In the $3 million, from a staff perspective, that was all items in the CIP. Through, from 2018 through 2020, there's $3,130,000. That is just items in the CIP.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That answers my question.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Mesky.
I'm just curious.
Messy, you're handling like that.
I'm curious. Our attorney talked about the details needing to go before the legislature, and I know that both our senator and representative have asked about this information before. I'm curious if we've had a conversation with what's in our resolution, if they have any suggestions for us to make sure that we don't hurt ourselves by how we're bringing it forward, that they might do something different, because I know that they were more than welcome a couple of years ago to carry this forward if we had done something then. And so, is there any reason for us to be making sure that the resolution that we're passing is correct, you know, for, or if our representatives haven't had any requests for that wording, and back to the concern that the mayor expressed about the dollars versus the terminology, so.
I, I did have a conversation with Representative Baker last week, but we didn't get into that amount of details. I just told him that what was coming before council tonight is what I talked with him about. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, certainly it can never hurt to engage your legislators early on issues like this. You will need their support in the event that the voters approve this tax. So, I think that would be a good thing to do. And I would also say that the finer details of this tax will be hammered out in the special legislation that will trump whatever you do in the resolution. The resolution has to check the certain boxes that we've already talked about, and, you know, this draft does so, and it's certainly open to adjustment by the council. So, so, yeah, it's probably good to keep your legislators involved at the outset of this. I'm sure they would appreciate it.
Okay. I have not talked to Senator Coonan probably for a month on this. Last time I talked to him was out at the, was out at the Community Center, so I'm guessing that's been a part of a month since I've talked to him about this. Councilmember Nelson.
Just maybe a follow-up question. What's the timeframe, or what are we being asked to do tonight? And I know our deadline is our next council meeting, so what do we have, what, what is it we're trying to do?
I think if the council is satisfied with the question that's in front of us, we certainly could entertain a motion on that tonight. I would want that one piece cleaned up, but that's again, up to council. I also, I heard one council member that was supportive- I also, I heard one council member that was supportive of that as well, at least. But, I kind of think that's where that's at. So, Councilmember Fager, that's what I think we're at, where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the curling club, yeah, it'd be great to have a third sheet of ice out there, but I'm willing to do what we did with the Blue Line, because they were ready to build at the fairgrounds. And we had to have a discussion, because they didn't think the city wanted them out there at the Civic Center. But, they did come, and they put up that structure, and found out they couldn't operate it, so they donated it to us. So, I'm willing to do that if, I mean, they need a connection, or a freestanding one out at the Civic Center area. Also, in regards to the money, you've got to remember, there's going to be some inflation in there, too. You know, you say 18 million, it could cost more. And it could sunset early, but I think the state, once you receive enough money, isn't there like a three-month or six-month period, or you have to continue with the tax, so they can do their job? I think, Mr. O'Kins.
Mr. O'Kins.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Fagerly, there's a 90-day notice that you have to give to the Department of Revenue to sunset or cancel the tax.
Okay, I knew it was something. And also, for the community center, I mean, it's very important, and, you know, I would prefer to have it out at the Civic Center somehow, but Jeepers talking with some seniors in the last couple of weeks, they said if it goes out there, it's too far, and they aren't going to go. So, when I ran in 88, that was the discussion then, they needed a Civic Center, or a community center, a senior center. And I was discussing with the Candy Mall at that time, to lease space for senior center there. And I see they've got plenty of space now, and even Skylark Mall. So, if you're not willing to build a new one, or if it stays where it's at, I would say, gut it and build new there. I mean, it's all steel beams, so you've got to decide what you want to do with the community center.
Councilmember Mesky.
I've said this before, I'll say it again, I think we need to finish some projects. I mean, when you put a project out there, if you do it two-thirds, and it stays neglected to the other one-third, and how, you're going to debate how that's going to be paid for, I don't think you get as much bang for your buck from the public. They want to see a project done, and see what their money went to. I think it's going to be pivotal to get that number more nailed down. I think I would agree now with the discussion about putting a 10-year limit on it, and let it go to that, and then let, you could sunset it early, but I really would be hesitant to make that go beyond that. And then, as far as curling is concerned, I, that's a fairly small constituency, and I know we've talked about it a lot. It would be, you know, a lot of these projects are very far-reaching. It would be good if that, you know, I know people keep talking about dedicated ice time, but if there are three sheets of ice, perhaps others could use that as well. I'd like to see that a broader context. We keep talking about it, and we talk about one entity, and I've heard from folks now that that seems fairly narrow in focus. So, I know we're in negotiations and trying to make that work, but if we can expand that, and maybe not keep referencing it to it as it's the curling club's ice, I think that would be a much more appealing sell to the community, because people are thinking, they're going to use it 24/7, can there be other uses of that ice and that time? Because it seems like then one club is getting preferential treatment over the rest of the projects that are on the list, but just my thoughts.
Okay, council, what, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just when I get ready, then you raise your hand.
I'm thinking a lot, believe me. Is there a reason that we couldn't put on their $5 million for streets and infrastructure? But, what's the reason we don't want to do that?
You could do that, you certainly could.
It was the number-one item in the survey. It's our number-one priority. We're falling behind. I mean, even if it was 10 million, I think we should, personally, I think we should fix the community center, the, they say it's like 800,000 to fix, it's somewhere in that neighborhood. I think we should do that, and take that 10 million we got in there, and put over 10-year period to the streets, massive million dollars a year. That will put a big dent in it, and, you know, people can't get to the parks and all these other things, well, they don't like to get to them on bad streets. And, I mean, we have a lot of sewer, and water pipes in Wilmer that are aging, aged, and they're going to have to be dug up. I would promote that. I mean, are we going to come to a conclusion in a motion soon, or?
I'm ready tonight, but I'm not sure the rest of the council is. You certainly could add that as an amendment. I think the city administrator's ready to write down anything that we want to do. I mean, he's, he's trying to do what we're asking him to do, and that's why he drafted these. And the original list had like 13 or 14 things on it, or 17, or whatever it was, he dwindled it down to four. I know that staff has met extensively about this. I know they called in Mr. Ingen to assist with the process, to make sure they were looking at everything correctly, get an outside opinion, which I think was very helpful. Thank you for your time, and allowing to do, allowing us to pick your brain about that. That's great. But, I mean, I think if you wanted to add something back in at this point, I mean, you could, but.
Heck, I'll make a motion and see how far it goes.
Perfect.
I'll move that those numbers read Civic Center improvements, $3 million. Robins Island improvements, $3 million. Community Center improvements, $1 million. And roads and infrastructure within the facility limits of Wilmer, $10 million, over a 10-year period, which is.
You going to leave Swanson Field in there, or you going to take that out?
Took it out, we can do that in CIP. Nobody likes my idea?
I think it's pretty radical. Motion dies for lack of a second. Councilmember Mesky.
I'll second that motion. Sorry.
Too late.
Too late.
My question, since you recognize me, what were the restrictions? There were some restrictions about putting money from local option sales taxes into roads. We had, had that, it came up in a discussion. What is that restriction?
Regional in nature.
Well, I think that, that we were trying to make the projects regional, in regional significance, and then Councilmember Johnson, a couple of meetings ago, pointed out the fact that, and I don't want to speak for you, Councilmember Johnson, but something about it could be local projects, not just regional significance. Can't remember how you said that, but.
Statute doesn't require them to be regional. I think that concept comes from a desire to be more appealing to the legislature as a whole.
Sure.
That's the way I remembered the conversation. I think you could make.
Mr. Mayor?
So, if the motion died for the lack of a second, does it have to have substantial change to be reintroduced, or can it be reintroduced if there's a willingness to second? I know if it fails, it has to have a significant change, but it never got a second, it never got voted on, it wasn't voted down.
Mr. Mayor, I think this would be a matter of your discretion as the chair to.
Boy, do we have some authority.
Let me look it up here just a minute.
No.
I'm just kidding.
Go ahead, I mean, I'm not telling you not to.
No, no, no.
That'll be the front page of the paper. The mayor tells Councilmember Christensen not to look something up in the book. So, you know, let's not, let's not have that happen. I'm turning red. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, if we're going to spend money on roads, are we still going to have the assessment program then? And then, the other question is for Mr. Ingen. Should we build a new senior center, or community center for a million dollars where it's at, using the frame?
Not build, refurbish.
Mr. Ingen, would you like to answer the question? I believe that, and I don't, not sure if you are privy to the report, but the report basically said for about $800,000.
870, wasn't it?
For about $800,000, we could make the needed immediate changes out there to make it more user-friendly.
I'm sure you could do a project. The question is, when you get into the details, is it the project that you'd really want to do? That's where the really question comes up. Any of these, these items, you know, you've got to look at the big picture, how it's going to be used, are there any additional programs you want to use, or something related? I know, I know from the people that are with the Civic Center, they've talked of several things separate, but it wouldn't, and even if, if it's a new project, it's really pulling numbers out until you really get into the details of what it is. I don't think you could say it's like a new building at those prices.
It'd be closer to three or four million?
You know, you've got rusting of the metal panels, and I haven't looked at that, seen that report, but there, you know, if you look at the metal panels around the edge, it's a metal building, it's rusting.
I'm thinking bedding it, and just.
Yeah.
The frame.
But, if you look at a new building, the amount of the frame is a few percentage points. You know, you've got a foundation, it's probably good, but you've got the enclosure, you've got all your mechanic, electrical, all the insights. In simple terms, the structure will always be less than a third of the cost, your mechanic, electrical will always be a third, and then finishes may be a third. If you get into that, if you look at the basic structure, the skin is, you know, it's, it isn't a 50-year kind of a building.
I, I want to try to see us move forward, but I'm, I'm concerned, I don't understand what we're saying on the term and the dollar amount. I think what I'm hearing is 18, no, I'm hearing 10, 10 years, we will collect it with a minimum of $18 million, or my?
So, it's a maximum of 18 million, is what I'm saying. What this says is that you will collect 18 million, if there's additional charges that are needed, you can continue to collect up to the 10 years to cover the costs of the four projects that have been identified.
That'd be the financing costs?
Include everything, right. Or like somebody else said, changes in values, and downturn in economy, and.
But, but my concern on that, Mr. Mayor, is that financing costs are going to be substantial. The dollar amounts that we're looking at here are going to be reduced. We're not going to be able to spend $18 million if we have to pay financing costs out of that. We'll probably be able to spend 13 or 14 million. That's my concern.
Mr. Ingen, I pulled that report up. The, to do the facilities improvements that they're asking, or saying that are immediate, it's 864,760 dollars. The total replacement of the building is 1,353,399. And I believe the question was, can we get anything done for that?
I don't really have enough information to get really too detailed, but I, I can, I can see for a building of that size, anything, a million dollars would not be the cost of a new building. And depending on what you're going to do with the skin of the building, where I can see there is rusting, it's depreciated, and that wasn't a, like a 50-year kind of a structure that would last, it's already been there for maybe 30, maybe 30 years, close to that. Just saving the steel and the foundation is, is, you know, it's.
Miniscule.
10, 15% of the value of a new building.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Nelson.
The.
Councilmember Nelson.
The concept of a community center, and the figure that's out there, I guess what I'm buying into now is not, we're not, we, we don't have a vision for what would be in that community center, and that we need to engage the community to see whether that, that is a direction that we're going to go. It certainly wouldn't be the same type of facility that it is now. And I think there's two different needs out there, and the community center is asking for a lot of things, and the senior club has a great thing going for the senior club, but the community center, and we heard it at the Blue Cross Blue Shield, this community is looking for other options. So, we shouldn't be passing judgment on what we're going to do to the community center with this, because I don't think we know yet. And I think part of what we're saying is that we will bring the community along in making those decisions as to what a community center should be. Otherwise, there isn't a reason to, if we're, put the figure out there, because we're not there.
Mr. Cruz.
Mr. Mayor and council, the community center is about 12,000 square feet, at $350 a square feet, the cost to replace it is about 4.2 million. The 800,000 is deferred maintenance, and that's kind of like getting it up to speed back to the 1970 building that it, that it was. So, if you do, it's, it's probably anywhere between a million and 4.2, depending on what you want to do to it. Just to replace what it is, again, what was proposed was something significantly larger than that.
So, council, are you wanting to, we're getting on to two hours of the meeting, we had an hour meeting before, you get to the point where you're non-productive. And so, are we wanting to, to bring the meeting to a close, or do we want to continue discussing this item? I think we either need to make a motion to move forward with something, either what's presented with an amendment on 18 million, or leave it the way it is, if you want it that way, or go to the next item on the agenda. Councilmember Amen, I'm sorry, Councilmember, yeah, Councilmember Amen, followed by Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we're talking about trying to, keep bringing up the fact we have to sell this to the community, if we're indeed, if we're indeed the salesmen. I'm not sure that, listening to everybody's discussion, that all of us are, want to be salesmen on these issues. But, what I'm really curious about is, have we gotten any written response, or any feedback from the business community? What's, what's the Chamber of Commerce's stand on this half percent sales tax? In effect, businesses, I don't know if it's been any, anything written or formally been given to us? Has anybody seen anything?
I think Mr. Warner was here at a meeting, wasn't he?
Mr. Mayor, I can just answer that, that they've said that once we know what we're doing, they will inform their members, and they will get a consensus, and they'll establish a position at that time.
And I think, what I remember him saying was that, you know, they have to know what we're asking. Once they know what they're asking, they will survey their members, they'll get that back to us, and then they will move accordingly. You know, I, I've presented to the, to the Chamber of Public Policy on this twice, I believe, and it just, it's, they've been neutral, they haven't committed one way or the other. Mr. Mesky? I'm sorry, Mr. Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to think out loud, because I've done a lot of thinking here during this whole discussion, this isn't going to be eloquent, but we'll go with it. First of all, I, yeah, I don't necessarily think it's the council's job, per se, to sell this to the community. I think we got to come up with the best potential projects to make available to the voters, to decide whether or not they want to make this investment in our community. And I guess that's prob, that's the way that I look at it, and I'm not, I'm generally anti-tax, anti-fee, whatever we can do to bring that lower, the better. However, there's a good segment of our population that believes that this is, these types of projects and a local option sales tax is a great avenue to reinvest in the community, and therefore, raise revenue, make it a more attractive place to live, work, do business, et cetera. My mode of thinking on these specific projects, in terms of the community center, and thinking back to all the conversations that we've had with people, and emails, and phone calls, and all that, we have so much money that, you know, looking at the facilities study, so much money that needs to be spent at, currently, the senior center, and kind of a, a public request and outcry for a community center at the same time, that it seems to me that if we go just putting some money into the senior center, we're chasing good money after bad, and I don't want to see that happen. So, I think overall, the, the concept and the idea for a community center, like a large-scale project that can have, you know, can be multifaceted, that the community can be involved in the vision for and creating, I support that. The Civic. significant expenses that are going to be coming up in the future that need to be addressed. This is one way to get ahead of the curve and do that. Robins Island, we also know that it has regional pull, but it can have, can and will have a huge, significant regional pull, once we have some additional private development out there, and we got to be anticipating supplementing that, that private money that's going to be coming into there, what other things are going to be needed out at the Robins Island location to facilitate all the infrastructural demands that are going to be additional to that. The only one that I guess jumps in there, and I have mixed emotions about, is the Swanson Field improvements. And I guess, based on the feedback and the discussions that we've all had about our prioritization of streets, roadways, water, infrastructure, whatever, I would simply like to swap out the Swanson Field improvements for roadway, street projects. Other than that, I'm fine with the dollar amounts for each project, excluding the Swanson Field improvements, but, but putting roadway projects in place of that. I think it's pretty important, that 10-year period being solid and potentially being able to sunset it earlier. I think that's a, a great idea, but I, I think it's really important that our community not feel like they're writing a blank check, so to speak, when it comes to an actual dollar amount. So if we say, you know, if we go according to this and we say 18 million, it's got to be 18 million. We got to be responsible with the money, and we have to anticipate ancillary costs during the planning process. And I think it's incumbent on us to just do our due diligence and make sure that we don't overshoot. And then it's up to the voters to decide whether or not this is an investment they want to make in our community. And that's what I have to say about that.
Perfect. Mr. Councilmember Mesky.
I forgot what I was going to say, because I was taken up by your words. I would say that in the resolution, the final piece, I would move that there needs to be the value as well, and if, maybe we'll just make it 18 million plus finance costs. Why can't we just put that value in there and adjust for all these other things we're talking about? So I guess, if you're looking for a motion to modify the election ballot question, we've had a lot of conversation, and maybe it's time to do something here, I'd move that we make it 18 million plus finance costs.
Second. Also made and seconded to have the dollar project amount increased to reflect $18 million plus finance costs. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Plowman followed by Nelson.
Could I ask Councilman Mesky, what your line item numbers are? Are they left as is?
I didn't...
Or is this not addressing that?
I wasn't addressing that. My bigger concern was having a dollar value in there. But if you want to make another motion modifying, as you suggested there, I would think you should.
I see Mr. O'Kens punching away on his computer back there, so are you trying to figure out what the finance cost would be?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council...
Or should I have not called on you?
To answer your question, yes, that's what I was doing.
Mr. Plowman? My face is turning red again.
I'm going to make an amendment to the motion, or I'm going to motion for an amendment. To include Mr. Mesky's motion, with the line items reading as follows. Civic Center improvements to the dollar amount $3 million. Robin Island improvements to the amount of $3 million. Roadway, street improvements to the amount of $2 million. Community Center, I wouldn't say improvements, I'd say development, to the amount of $10 million.
Second. Motion made and seconded.
I did a second, I'm sorry.
Mesky seconded, I believe, didn't you?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Anderson. Now, we're, we're talking to the amendment.
To the amendment, but my question is, is this to the ballot, or is this to the resolution?
It's to the resolution. The ballot question would have to come, be developed after we have the resolution passed, correct?
Mr. Mayor, my understanding of the original motion was that we were, that the mover wanted to add the information about the cost to be raised by the tax in the election ballot.
Correct.
So I would say that this motion to amend the original motion has to be pertaining to the ballot. Obviously, we will take your direction if you approve this motion and include it in the resolution we bring back at the next meeting.
So I was confused. Was your amendment to the ballot question or to the resolution, Mr. Plowman? Councilmember Plowman?
Well, I maybe made an error, but it was, I wanted them to be included as one, is what I wanted to do.
Well, it would, it would reflect in the ballot question, because it does say Swanson Field Complex on the ballot. If you were to make that.
And I basically wanted to remove that and insert street.
Let me try and retroactively make this easier. The ballot language is quoted in the resolution. I think we can all construe that this is a, both motions pertain to the resolution itself, if the mover agrees.
I would.
Councilmember Nelson.
I tried to do this before the amendment to the motion, but I will speak against the amendment. There are approximately, I think, so I'm curious why we think we can replace CIP dollars for the Civic Center, but we're not willing to replace CIP dollars for Swanson Field, because I believe that's about what's in the CIP right now. I'd also like to understand how we're going to take the $2 million in our roads and implement that. Are we disrupting the current process that we had? So my street's up for improvements, so you're going to do my street with local option sales tax and not assess me? How are we going to address the assessments, and what are we going to do? I'm all for putting additional dollars towards streets. I believe that we've asked that question before about what's the maximum we can handle. I don't understand how we would take the local option sales tax and put them towards streets. So I don't support that unless there's some way to do that, that designates a specific process that will be used. Because I think what all these others are saying is if we bring money in for local option sales tax, we're relieving our CIP and we can do other things with those dollars. So why aren't we just allocating those dollars to maximize the street improvements through the CIP process versus encumbering the local option sales tax?
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe earlier, Mr. Scott mentioned that these numbers only have to be general numbers. And so the $2 million for street improvements, Sean will know where to put them, and he has a list of what needs to be done and as far as prioritization, and we leave it up to his discretion to do that. Speaking of the general, well, this is to the amendment, so just to answer your question.
I'd like clarification on that, because I don't understand that that's how we just take money and put it in there, and then, because the process is in place for how we assess. So I'd like clarification on that, because I don't understand how we just take the $2 million. I understand what Hutchinson did, they had a specific project, it was all under the street, it applied to everyone. I don't understand what we're talking about doing with $2 million for roads. I'd like an answer.
Mr. Christiansen, do you have an answer for us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my answer would be the form of a short explanation on our current assessment policy, of which would take, I believe, a significant amount of time to address these very issues that you're bringing up. I suppose it's conceivable to use the tax dollars for matching funds, if you will, on these streets. I still find it hard to believe that the legislature would allow us to use optional sales tax dollars on local streets.
All those in favor of the amendment, which takes out Swanson Field improvements and puts in street, street improvements in tune of $2 million, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Aye.
Roll call. No.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fagerly.
No.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
No.
The amendment fails. Now on to the question of the original question. And Mr. Scott, could you help us with that original motion? Or...
As I understand, the original motion was simply to include the information about the total cost to be raised by the tax into the ballot question, and that information would be $18 million plus financing costs.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. That's good work. What's the next step we need to do here, Mr. Cruz?
Based on that direction, I think we'll make, we'll bring back a resolution at the next council meeting with those changes and...
Prepare the ballot question?
I think we may have to work a little bit on the ballot question. There's a few edits, just to clarify construction of a community center improvement versus new. I think...
That amendment didn't pass.
But to call it development instead of improvement might...
That didn't pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm confused. The motion that was just passed was, as I understood it, just to add the amount of financing to the resolution.
Correct.
It was not to pass a resolution as far as the ballot.
No, it was the ballot question. His motion was just for the ballot question.
Right.
I didn't understand, understood that he was...
The ballot question needed to reflect, and this is what my attempt was, it changed when he added the street thing, but it was, the ballot question needs to reflect the dollar amount plus finance charges, so we know exactly what it is.
That needs to reflect that, but that doesn't mean we approved the ballot question.
That, so Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm sorry to interrupt. That's correct. You have not formally approved a resolution, you haven't approved the ballot language. You have given us the direction we need to make some revisions to what you have before you today, so we'll bring it back to you for formal approval or consideration and formal approval at the next meeting.
And because of that, I mean, I'm questioning the Civic Center, or the Civic, Community Center improvements of $10 million. When we could build on 4.2, it tells me that there's going to be something glamorous about this community center, and again, I don't want us to be competing with local businesses, that this thing's going to be this great big thing to draw everybody out there and keep them out of downtown Wilmer or the south end of Wilmer. I mean, we better define that $10 million community center improvement. I don't want to be competing with local businesses and attracting people out there where they could go other places in Wilmer and where the businesses charge and make a living. So how do you define that $10 million thing? Holy smokes.
That's your, that's your, that's your edges, and...
Pretty big edges.
Right. But, I mean, the council, you know, I think Councilmember Nelson summed it fairly well is that, you know, we have, we say that we will look at a community center, we'll get public input, I'm assuming Mr. Inge will be involved in that process, and we'll get everybody, we'll get all the input, and then we'll come back, and then if it ends up being, like you said, whatever you said, 4. whatever million, if that ends up being the number, then that's what we build. And then it can be retired early, you just can't spend more than that, including the finance fees. Then why aren't we doing it for Robins Island and the Civic Center improvements? Boost them up to 5 million and get the, you know, get the 22 or 23 million we're going to get, you know? What, what, if that's the logic or illogic, I don't understand that. That, that, that's a big, there's a lot of budget in there from 4.2 million to 10, $10 million and...
Well, I think, you know, I think, I think you mentioned it earlier, Councilmember Christiansen, when we looked at the Civic Center improvement for the last ballot question, we had 800,000 in there. We ended up spending over 3 million.
Mm-hmm.
Or 2.8 million, I think it was. So things change, and as council, I mean, just because the ballot question gets prepared, we accept the ballot question, we move forward, that doesn't mean that that's exactly what's going to be built. It's the parameters.
If I may...
You may.
The difference between 4.2 million and $10 million facility is a huge difference in staffing, maintenance, and future costs.
Correct.
Which we have to swallow down the road. And, believe me, people I talk to are, they don't want their property taxes raised, they want the sewer and water and electricity that have been going up quite frequently. There's a lot of tired people on my ward, and I hear from them all the time. And whether or not they would use this facility, I don't know. But there's a big difference there, 4.2 to 10 million and what it would create and the cost to the city down the road. I mean, I could go for the 4.2 and, you know, like Rick said, take the one down and put it in that. The location is perfect for the seniors. But again, I...
You know, Councilmember Christiansen, the council has voted, and now we're talking about something the council already voted on. You know...
No, we haven't. We haven't voted on that.
No, we haven't, not on the ballot question. That'll come, what we heard is that'll come to the next meeting. So, I mean...
Are we waiting for a motion? Or no, it's just you're going to do the ballot question and bring it back to us?
Staff has what we need to bring the resolution and ballot question back to you for the next meeting for approval.
Councilmember Nelson.
There've been several comments about the curlers, and the Civic Center improvements are, are no different than the community center improvements kind of thing. But I've been at meetings, the mayor, Administrator Cruz and I, the curlers are still asking us to sit down. They are still interested in staying in our community. I think we owe a conversation to them, to listen to what they want and whether it's something that works. I would hope that we will continue on those conversations and to look at what's best for the community of Wilmer, and listen to what their proposals are that, that they are looking at doing versus us passing judgment with that. And I've asked for those meetings to take place, and I'm hopeful that maybe we can have additional meetings before the August 1st meeting. So unless someone has strong feelings against that, I think that's something that we owe the curlers, and we owe this community.
Do we want to set a committee to meet with them? As the council, formally? I mean, the meetings up to this point have been informal.
That seems to work. I don't know, you, you kind of have some established rapport, or whatever you want to call it, so why would we reinvent the wheel?
I'm just asking if, I mean, you know, we've reported that we've been having these meetings, but I want to make sure the council is, you know, I mean, we're not, we're not offering anything, we're just listening is what we're doing, so. And Councilmember Nelson has been willing to sit in on those, I've sat in on those, or City Administrator's sat in on some of those. Councilmember Nelson?
I just want to make sure the meeting happens, because it's been difficult to get a commitment to have the meeting and have the people at the table. And they are still asking for that, and so I'm asking for the council, unless the council is opposed to it, that we try to make that meeting happen so that we have an idea of what their requests are or what our requests are. So that's my concern, is that we... So, that's my concern, is that we try to get to that. I don't think it makes a difference from the Civic Center improvement figure that's in there with what happens with that, but I just want the meeting to happen.
City Administrator Cruz?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, perhaps it would be good to bring it to like the Finance Committee and/or one of the other committees, I mean, they do have a proposal, they do have a request, and I feel we don't have authority to be, you know, making offers on behalf of the council without some direction from the council.
The proposal that was presented was only a place to start. We asked them for that, and we said we'd sit down again to do that. We haven't done that. They are still asking for us to do that. So, I think, you know, none of us are authorized to do anything on our own, but I think we could certainly sit down together and put the best steps forward to see if there is a way to make this work for them to be in this community. That's part of their request.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't we have a park board yet?
The park board is part of the community...
Well, I know.
...education and recreation, and I don't believe they've met, and I think they've met once in the last two years. So, no, we don't really have a place to go with that.
Because what we're supposed to have is a park board that's supposed to meet before the community ed. Because there's people from the city that's supposed to be on the park board.
Understand that, that's a different, probably a different subject, and I don't think it'll happen before the next week, so.
Because it's supposed to go there, and then it's referred on to a committee. But, I mean, if you want to bring it to community development, I have no problem with that.
I just think they're asking just for a genuine sit-down, and let's see if we can roll up our sleeves and find a way for them that works for Wilmer and works for, and if it doesn't, they're looking to do something, to do something. Is it going to be in Wilmer, is it going to be somewhere else? I think we haven't given them the time to do that yet.
Do you want it as a public meeting, or do you still want to continue just a couple of council people and the mayor?
If we hold a meeting and we can bring forth something new that's, I'm not sure that it's connected with this, but it could be. I don't think it is right now, but I do think it will make a difference with, if they leave, it will make a difference in the Civic Center facility. And if they stay, it may or may not make a difference.
The difficult part is, is, you know, when we have, when we're having these meetings, I mean, we always preface it by saying, you know, it takes council approval, I mean, you know, we're just, we're just trying to talk this through, and I've met with staff about it. I was unavailable, I was out of town on Friday, they wanted to meet on Friday, couldn't meet Friday, but... Councilmember Meskey?
Well, may I suggest that they meet with one of our established committees, and let's do this with the lights on and the doors open, let's, let's just do this. Can we meet with the curlers, please, so we can take care of this?
Okay, so, you've agreed to have it at your committee? Put on your agenda for...
And I think we owe them to do some prep work with them and prepare them to come to the committee.
I'll arrange that meeting.
Okay. So, that'll be on community development, I got a reason to meet.
We're going to meet anyway.
Oh, okay, good. Okay. Anything else we have to do on local option sales tax? You guys said you have what you need. Council, anything else that you would like to talk about before we go to announcement of community meeting dates? Councilmember Meskey?
The thing that happened back at Labor, I want to bring that up just briefly, the stormwater compliance permit assistant position. Is it my understanding now that at committees, if there are tied votes, that will not be coming to the council, is that how we're going to function?
I think you as a council have to decide that, this...
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, to my knowledge, this is the first time that's ever happened. And I've sat in these meetings for 16 years.
Because let me just say that at that council meeting, and in the minutes, it's reflected that that was going to come here. If that is not how we're going to function, I need to know that upfront instead of afterwards, because that disenfranchises not only the people that put the plan together, but the council members that didn't hear the plan as well. And so, if we're going to function that way, I'd like that to be known, or if this is the exception, then why is it the exception? Because that's not how we've functioned in the past, is my understanding, is that how we're going to function in the future?
Councilmember Anderson?
I completely agree. I think it was an honest mistake, and it happened, and then we got wrapped up in these procedural issues in our parliamentary procedures, and I feel very bad that we didn't get to discuss that. I think it was a breach of our duties that we didn't get to articulate that subject.
Okay. You know, I think in, in open, honest government, you know, when an issue comes before a committee, there's only four council members that are on the committees, and we bring the information here. If it fails, it's done. But when, you know, I was surprised, because I was prepared to talk about it if it needed to be talked about, so I was very surprised at what happened this evening. Like I said, I've been coming to these meetings for 16 years, it's the first time I've seen it happen. But now we know, and if that is, it does not appear to me that that is going to be our practice in the future. But I think that we need to get that established, that tie votes come to the council for discussion. Councilmember Meskey?
And with that said, then I believe, as you articulated quite nicely, is that when we ask for, when motions are coming forward, just let them have their time, either vote them up or vote them down. Don't, we don't want to skirt those issues, they need to have a voice and we can vote them up or down. I think that's the way it needs to be, and I'm hoping that you'll put that on the next agenda then, because it has a, has the right to be voted up or down.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Amen?
I, I understand where you're coming from, and I agree, but when there's due to vote, I don't see of any form of government where something is, where the chairman has to read the minutes and say, "I approve and move the recommendation" or make a motion. But there's, there's nothing in here that really states, it was a 2-2 vote, you know, I mean, majority usually rules, so it's a tie vote, then what we could have done very easily, and it was just through a procedural issue here, I have no problem talking about it or voting on it again if that's what the council wants to do. But at this case, I didn't feel it was right for me to pass a motion to vote on this issue again when there was not a consensus with the committee. I, it was a 2-2 vote, so there is no motion authorized because it was not passed. So, it's an issue that we should, we should address.
Mr. Scott, maybe you can, maybe you can look into this and see, you know, what other cities have done, what other cities do. I mean, we've done, I know that this has been, this happened before, you know, in the chair, you know, and that's, that's one of the responsibilities of the chair, is to bring the information forward so the entire council has an opportunity to talk about it. And I know, I remember in the past where council members have said, "I'm not in favor of this, but I'm bringing the issue forward," and it's coming with no recommendation. And I believe Councilmember Christiansen, I think you've done that, I'll say at least one time that I know of, and I think it's quite a few more times than that, but you say that this is coming with no recommendation.
Correct.
Is what, is how it's coming.
If I may?
I'm going to go there, and then I'm going to you. I'm going to the city attorney, because he might clear it all up.
Well, very briefly, Mayor, I wanted to just chime in, I made the comment earlier during the committee, you're still in an open meeting, a regular meeting, there's no reason a council member couldn't make that motion now, given that things might have been handled unusually compared to how you would normal, normally handle committee requests. So, that is an opportunity any council member still has while this meeting's convened.
Yeah, but what I'm hearing is an interest to bring it back at a future meeting.
And that's fine, too, and it is...
Because there's feelings here now that may not be that way at the next meeting. Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad you made that clear, I mean, from my understanding, a motion was made to file the minutes, it was seconded, and we have to vote on that motion. That's why he could not bring that subject back up, I guess, for a vote, but as we all know, should know, you can make a motion on anything you want, any open meeting, anytime. Next week, next meeting, I can bring that motion up for defeat.
Or you could bring it up now.
Yeah, I mean, we're in an open meeting, and Mr. Scott stated, if you want to bring up a motion or you want to discuss something, it's, as long as the mayor is okay with it, it's okay, it's...
Okay, I think we beat that horse. Councilmember Meskey?
I'm going to kick it one more time.
It's down, so go ahead.
That's not a problem. The problem is, is that at the committee, the decision was made that said, so we're going to bring it to the council without a recommendation, and the answer was yes. That is my only concern, because then it did not happen. I know that I'm well within my rights to make a motion at any time. I'm just wondering about procedure and future procedures, and my understanding is that it's not going to be a future practice. That is what I was looking for, and we will see this hopefully at the next meeting.
Thank you. Council, committee meeting dates, finance?
Finance, we'll meet Monday, July 25th, 4:45, City Hall.
Public Works, Public Safety?
Tuesday, the 26th, 4:45.
Labor?
No meeting scheduled.
Community Development?
Thursday.
Cool.
27th or whatever.
28th?
28th.
We have a, okay, there's our committee meeting dates. We have a lot of exciting things happening in our community. Mr. Christiansen, Councilmember Christiansen's wearing stand-up, show everybody proud, is wearing his Rockin' Robins, that's tomorrow night out at Robins Island. It will be a great event, looking forward to seeing all of you out there. They're hoping to have a crowd of at least 5,000, so let's add the eight of us and be 5,008. Starts at...
Doesn't have the time on the back of your shirt.
Mr. Brizendine?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, members of the public, the Rockin' Robins event is indeed tomorrow night. It starts at 5:00 PM with the Dam Jammers playing opening act from 5 to 6:00. The Fabulous Armadillos will start shortly after 6:30. There will be food, beverages, and kids' games, as well as artisans and arts and craft activities, they all start at 5:00 PM as well.
Perfect. And then there also will be some people out there talking about the Destination Playground, so if you're interested in the Destination Playground, that information is ramping up. If you would, if you're interested in serving on one of those committees, those subcommittees, you can either contact myself or Mr. Dave Baker, who resides in town and runs the Oaks, he'd be welcome to hear you talk about that as well. And then, our city council member, Mrs. Nelson, is getting an award from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities for her outstanding achievements. And so, I just want to recognize her, I know that that award is on Thursday at their conference, their spring conference, so for all the leadership that you've provided to that organization, and also for your great work representing Outstate Minnesota for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, I want to thank you. As most of you know, she serves on the board, and she does a lot of work, puts a lot of extra time and effort into it, and I really appreciate that and commend you in advance of receiving your award on Thursday, so really, it's really an honor to get that statewide recognition here in Wilmer, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our city administrator will be attending that event with Councilmember Nelson, and I believe you're out of town Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I believe, correct?
That was the plan, I do have a death in the family, I may not be able to go, so...
Okay, sorry to hear that, so. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion, let's, if there's anything else. Motion made and seconded, word adjourned.